Good evening, everybody. I'm going to be chair tonight. So let me start off. By reading our script. As the chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative.
Did you say, did you say me or I couldn't hear?
I was muting other people. I must have hit it by accident. Comes in the room.
So do I need to start over? You stopped at.
We didn't hear anybody names. Yeah, we didn't hear any names.
Okay, alright. So, school committee members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Natasha Rivera.
Here.
Hillary Griffin.
Here.
And I'm here. Elizabeth is going to be absent tonight and Mary is going to be a little late. So staff, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Colleen Andrade.
Here.
Jeff Ferrante. Charles Gabon.
Here.
Brian Haas.
Here.
And Wayne White.
Here.
Thank you. This open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act. Governor Baker signed into law on July 16th, 2022, extending certain pandemic-related policy measures. This bill authorized the continuation of remote meetings and public access under the Open Meeting Law and other remote meeting provisions until March 31st, 2023. This committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded. Accordingly, be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please use the raise your hand function to let the chair know if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. Meeting materials. Most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public Schools website in a folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas. Under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents used unless the chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing wishing to make a comment to be read during a virtual meeting and entered into the public record may do so by emailing comments to comments the number four SC meeting at maynard.k12.ma.us. Comments need to be emailed in advance and will be received up to up until the public comments agenda item is addressed. Please include public comment in the subject line and your full name and street address in the body of your email. Emails without this information cannot be read. Statements longer than 350 words may be cut short at the three-minute mark to ensure that everyone has the opportunity to be heard, but will be submitted in their entirety for the public record. The chair will read only one statement from each individual. However, additional comments may be submitted for the public record by providing a copy to the chair via email up until the end of the meeting explicitly stating their desire to have these additional comments included in the public record. Please be aware that the purpose of the public comments period is a devoted time for the school committee to hear from the community it serves. As such, the protocol supports the unidirectional public sharing of public comments rather than a bidirectional conversation. Before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please don't do so through the chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. So before we move to the item, the first item on the agenda, roll call to come to order.
Mara, I just want to note that Mary has entered the meeting.
Great, thank you. So roll call vote Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Hillary Griffin.
Yes.
And I'm a yes. And okay, so we're all set with that. We have, we have citizen comments. Make my way there. We have one tonight from Lindsay Iglauskis. 18 George Road. I'd like to suggest making the next election day a professional day or day for parent-teacher conferences, so we do not have children in the building when an election is taking place. I found it ironic that Green Meadow was having their safety drill the same day we were allowing hundreds of adults into Fowler to vote. If it's not possible to have to not have children in the building during an election, I think we need more people posted to prevent voters from entering other parts of the building. Thank you. Colleen, can you just check to make sure we don't have any others?
I have, and I've got no other emails.
Okay, great. Thank you. Brian, do we have any urgent business?
No urgent business tonight.
Okay. Then we're on to the student representative report.
Hi.
Rachel.
It's just Liam's helping out with the telethon, so. So first we have our highlights. All fall sports all finished except for cross-country and the Thanksgiving Day football game. So we have the boy soccer reached a round of eight, girl soccer reached around of 16, and football reached around of eight. We also talked about the first snow and how everybody was excited for it. Some of the concerns we had was the behavior at the football games, especially recently. We had negative comments from students. It was mostly AMSA. They set off firecrackers. They were throwing eggs. They were throwing food. It was not good. Some of the solutions we came up with was that AMSA will be separated from Maynard students at the next game with AMSA administrators present. Because one of our problems was that our administrators could not recognize AMSA students. Our MIAA ambassadors will be working to build a better section with clear leadership from upperclassmen, especially keeping people civil as we move into basketball season. And budget was another concern. Students genuinely support increased arts and elective funding as well as are interested in a business program in the high school. And lunches, we just had the meeting with Whitsons. And they were receptive to the feedback from us. However, they noted that the small sizes we're complaining about are actually bigger than the state recommendations. So that was a disagreement we had on that part. And another problem they mentioned was students putting in charges on other students' accounts without their consent. Things that we're looking forward to is the homecoming dance tomorrow. The winter sports starting soon and Spirit Week is going great already, and we're looking forward to the rest of the themes.
Great. Somebody have any questions? Natasha?
Thank you so much. I was interested in, I'm curious about the proposed options for, well, disappointed to hear about the behavior concerns at at the sports because I know they're a collaborative with Maynard and so I, some of them are Maynard students or Maynard residents as well. Yeah. How does that, how do you that the suggested option, how do you envision that happening if they are also Maynard residents, that they would not be in the student section? They wouldn't be allowed in the student section?
I wasn't at our last meeting because of the CPR training, but
Right.
what I've heard from AMSA students that live here that I work with, they were kind of disappointed and I think that we're still working on that. Because we tried other solutions, but then at the last game, the whole egg situation happened and it was a very instantaneous thing.
So that you've seen this progressing, you feel, or the
Yeah.
Through the season?
The year it was fine. It was just like, I don't know, just cheering and stuff, but over the past like two or three games, it got crazy.
Okay, that's, that's, it's interesting feedback too. I don't know if how and this might be more of a Brian or Elizabeth question, how are we able to engage the administrative folks at AMSA about some of these concerns or is there?
Ms. York? Go ahead.
I've been on the phone with Mike Nowrocky, the principal of AMSA, more days than not over the past couple of weeks. Two weeks ago, we had the firecracker incident. And then last week, one of our Maynard High School students was hit with an egg that was thrown by an AMSA student. So their staff has been investigating very vigorously. And earlier this week, we did get a confession of who brought the eggs and who threw the egg. So those students will not be attending any sports events for the rest of the year. And in an abundance of caution, Mike and his team are going to sit with their kids in a separate part of the bleachers from where Olga and I will be with our students. And that will just be for the last game of the football season. And then we will work together as administrative teams and also the MIAA ambassadors, as Rachel mentioned, will work on a plan for us to reunite as one student section and have a better time next year.
Thank you. Thank you so much for working on that. It's disappointing, but I'm glad it seems like hopefully these are isolated issues that aren't going to carry over. Other than that, I'm really excited, Rachel, that you guys are homecoming is going to be tomorrow, so.
It's actually November compared to last year. We're very excited.
Good, good. Awesome. That's it. That's it. Thank you so much.
Of course. Mary?
Yes, Rachel, thanks for bringing up the the food service again. We actually talked about it yesterday, two days ago, I guess, yesterday, I think it was at Wellness Committee and Kaylee Dottehue.
Yes.
Our student rep, which is, we're so excited to have a student rep on that committee, but she did mention that the Whitsons is actually providing, it's the high school. It seems like the high school is the issue because of course, you know, high schoolers eat more than younger kids, especially with all the activities and that that you guys do. And so one of the things that we were talking about was she had mentioned that what a lot of the kids are doing is they are getting their free lunch, but because it doesn't fill them, they buy another one, which is great for the kids that can can afford it. But we, I know Kaylee was talking about, you know, really getting the student government involved in making sure that, you know, the kids that that need the reduced or free assistance that they're able to, you know, because they obviously, you know, are not in as great a situation as some other kids, so they continue to be working it, but I really appreciate the efforts that you guys are doing too while we're trying to fix it at this end. So thank you.
Of course. Kaylee and I are both on two out of three people who met with Whitsons. So it was, it was kind of disappointing to hear, but we're going to keep bringing it up, you know? Because we want to work towards our goals and really try to provide as much food as possible for the students that need it.
Definitely. I like your persistence. That'll carry you well through life. Thank you.
Hillary, I don't know if you are able to participate? Or I
Think she was gonna.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's not. Alright, I just wanted to check in with you, so.
Did you want to put anything in the chat if you had any questions? Nope, okay.
Okay. I had one actually Mara before you, after you.
Well, hold on. Hillary, if you do have anything, please just let us know. Okay. And I don't have anything either, so. Go ahead, Natasha.
It was actually Mary, the the food piece. I did have, it was great to hear. This is maybe also for Rachel as well. Is it that the portions are smaller? I'm just wondering in comparison, because last year there was also the free meal option, different vendor, but are we, is it that students are noticing a smaller portion in the free meal? That that's requiring them to get another free meal? That's what I was wondering.
Yeah, it's.
Art survey results, there's a multitude of things, but I think this year, some of the options to add to the main meal aren't as great as well as just, I guess, smaller sizes like the wings. We only get like two to three. And students are just very disappointed about it. So I think, I don't know if it's the vendor or if it's like the change in staff, but we're trying to work on it. Because it's not a huge difference, but a bunch of our student athletes have been complaining about it.
And as Rachel mentioned, the Whitsons is going by the state requirement. But then they're actually, according to what they said, they're actually providing more than that. So they're trying to compensate, but and the other piece I guess is that they have to have the four different food groups. Otherwise, it doesn't get counted toward reimbursement. So there's a couple of different pieces that they're trying to work on, but.
So if it's more about like great, that example that you used, Rachel, about the the wings, it's three pieces now, you know, I guess I'd be curious, just in that one example, if there's been, because there's, you know, food costs and inflation is has grown. If they are reducing, like if that's impacting down to the plate, how much they're able to do, but I don't think that, I think it's the portions are mandated though by the USDA, right? So I'm just hoping that there's not that correlation that they're adjusting with the offerings. That would be my worry, I guess.
Yeah. Honestly, I think the sizes, depending on the meal, like the mac and cheese, there's pretty good sizes. It's just the fact that you have to get so much food with it and students can be picky or just not like certain things. And you're not allowed to get extra if you're not getting something else.
Got it. I hear you. So it's more like an à la carte is preferred, but we can't really do that as much.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that clarify.
Thank you, Rachel.
Of course.
Thank you guys for inputs. Very valuable. Thank you. Nice. Brian? For our superintendent's report?
Yeah, great. If Colleen can pull that up, that will be fabulous. Which I'm sure she can. And I can start, as you know, just for the audience, the school committee and the select board met to talk about bleachers and we have a meeting early this week. I do with Wayne, Greg, Justin to move that forward. There was really no formal decision yet. Looking at CPC, who has our final application for new bleachers and really looking at a variety of options from not having dessert side to only and only having a home guide to improving what's there. Which is and really getting still in the gathering information phase for the bleachers at this point, and we'll keep you updated as we go along. Actually, there's nothing on the screen yet, Colleen, but you probably know that.
I see, I see.
Oh, you see something?
Yeah, I see them. Yeah, your bleacher, your superintendent report.
Okay, then it's probably my computer and I'll just keep going. Okay. As long as you all see it, it's.
Do you see us? Do you see us?
I do see you on the side of my screen. I can keep on.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question about that? Because one of the things that did come out at that meeting was that there was going to be a task force put together, right?
Yep. Greg's organizing that as well, and I would anticipate using the field task group as sort of the base for that, because we have a really collaborative group, which involves school administration, townspeople, and most of the heads of like Maynard youth soccer, Maynard youth, or friends of Maynard soccer, Maynard youth football, the recreation commission, a variety of people already meeting. So I think that'll be the start to that, but I think Greg's going to formally put that out as a task force. We don't call ourselves a task force. We are just a fields group and we have great conversation and move things forward and talk about field maintenance and whatnot. This might be.
It's a great group. It's a great group. I'm glad it's able.
It is a very good group.
Multiple like efforts. There's a lot of different, you know, things in that in that arena that need to be discussed and vetted out. So I'm glad. I did have one other question about the bleacher too, which I thought about after, just to kind of put it out there as we talk about money. Free cash, we haven't been allocated our free cash yet for closing FY22 that will be known in December, so that might be an opportunity of a larger slice of that that could offset the total cost of, you know, last year there, I don't think we're going to get anything close to last year, got 1.5 million, but even if it's, you know, 1 million or 700,000, again, there, that can subsidize in some capacity too. So just a thought to, we'll know more about in the
In the near future. Great, thank you. Another update, which I'm not going to, I shared with you while I sent you the PDF in terms of some new disciplinary procedures that have come out from the state level, which really just makes discipline, I would say, a little more student friendly, if you will. It's a little more process heavy on administrative side of things, but the goal is to keep students in school as much as possible. And so we've shared that with the administrative team, actually, and had documents in terms of flow charts and whatnot associated with that. So all the administrators have that to follow. And I think those are probably for the schools that really aren't following up-to-date procedures. That's not us. That's no one even probably around us, but I think bigger cities may have bigger issues and might sort of jump to suspension very quickly. The smaller towns, Maynard and surrounding towns don't tend to fall into that group. So I think there was some concern about bigger cities, if you will. But nonetheless, we are up to date and following the newest proceeding, the newest procedures. Next, and this will happen a little bit later, can you really see my, see the screens? Or are you looking at something that says FY24 budget recommendations?
Colleen is keeping up. She is scrolling along.
Alright, that's awesome. It's a little harder when you can't see anything, but that's, that's on me, not you. So in a few minutes, I think it's next on the agenda. Let's see. Yep. Next on the agenda, you you will hear from Maynard High School Principal York and Fowler School Principal Barth and Green Meadow Principal Rulo in terms of school council asks. So I just wanted to let let you know they are here. We have talked this through as administrative team. There's a lot of really good quality asks that you're going to hear about shortly, so I won't steal their thunder. I would just let you know that it's coming momentarily. Now you're probably looking at a page that says collaborative update. So this year, four times this year, you'll get an update from each of the collaboratives. And we are members of two collaboratives. We are members of Aspen Valley Collaborative and Case Collaborative. So throughout the year, you will get an update, a longer update that I sent that you can read with some high points that I'll just point out. So for Aspen Valley Collaborative, I included their website so you can review it just for interest sake, if you will, what their, some of their priorities and challenges are for this year and next year. DESI compliance review for what they're participating in, DESI compliance review for special education, civil rights approved public day and English learner programs. That's all on their schedule for this year. So those are the things they're going through and it's good. Good checks and balance for Aspen Valley. They're working on stabilizing and strengthening enrollment in their programs and services. They currently still have a waitlist. And that is really a response to struggling with staffing, like they certainly can't take more kids than they have staff for. And as much as we struggle with staff, they struggle equally as much, but their kids are of higher need than our kids. They're developing and implementing a strategic plan. And they're working on an elementary program for next year, which they don't currently have. So that'll be exciting because there are a lot of younger kids that have had some traumatic issues and really need a place to go. And there really aren't very many places for elementary school kids in terms of collaborative. So they're working on that. They're also assessing their long-term facility needs and developing a strategic strategic plan to address renovations or new space. And there's a lot more information in what I sent you. So that's good. I will actually be there tomorrow as at a board meeting as well. And Case Collaborative, which is interesting, similar collaborative, if you will, we actually have Case in our building. We have a couple of programs within our building, so you'll see those kids if you come visit. At the end of FY22, the beginning of this year, they had hired 23 new full-time employees, which was 45% of new staff, our classroom support staff. So there's a lot of turnover there. Ridership, we don't actually use their transportation, but they are, but that's one of the things that they would share. Most of the, I will say, most of the member districts do use them for transportation. We don't, they have some pretty strict rules that don't always work in our favor. I understand their rules. Mr. Ferrante understands the rules. They make sense in terms of, so for example, if the city of, the town of Stowe, for example, is not a member district for Case. And if we have a student, a homeless student, for example, who might need transportation who was in Stowe, they can't pick that up. That's just not within their capacity. But our current transportation company is able to work a little bit more just based on who they service and where they service them. So we do not currently use Case Transportation. But it has been explored. We used to use them long ago. It's been recently explored this year. And then again, transfer state transportation staff was interesting. That's been a big discussion at the Case Collaborative, I will tell you. Because they had struggled mightily to get enough drivers for students. So interesting what happens if, and this could happen at wherever. So I will just share this with you. If you, if the collaborative that, if the transportation company can't support the students that you have, the district ends up having to pay basically out of the operating budget separately for that. And for those who don't know, transportation in and of itself can be exceedingly expensive. So we're fortunate that we're not in that situation and we're fortunate as a board member, if you will, sitting on the board, that they've been able to hire more teachers and they've been able to pick up the students that they need to. So that's a win for the Case Collaborative as well.
Brian, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
About Case, there's two things. One, since you're talking about the transportation, it's, it's, we we opt to use van van pool. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, alright, because that's, okay, that's what I was wondering, because I know that that's our, that are preferred for for all out of district uses, or is it, okay?
I believe it is.
And then my other question is about the case program on site at Fowler. I know at one point we, there was a, they had certain amount of rooms they were using or spaces and there was a rental associated. Do we know if that's changed or if there's a need to expand or if there is additional, if there's even a space to offer more rental?
So they've gone the opposite direction, actually. They've in the last couple of years, they actually took on space, I want to say, at in Acton Boxborough, one of the schools, because they really were trying to condense their programming for scales of economy's sake. So I don't know that they haven't asked if they can expand. They have space in in our building that they use. We've reallocated some space and made sure that what they're using, we're charging, you know, Wayne has worked with their business manager to make sure that what they're using there, we're charging appropriately for, and it's working well.
Okay, no, I I do like I know Case, when it, when it has worked well, is is really good because it allows inclusion opportunities in in general education schools that for for kids. So it's not always, you know, depending on the needs. And I always thought that was really great. And when they are in Fowler, I know there's a lot of students who, you know, try to, you know, welcome them and and see them. So it'd be great if we can foster that opportunity if there is space for it and if they ever express a need or if there's a creative opportunity for a program there that we could think of, if there's such a need for kids growing, I didn't know if there was an opportunity to explore kind of a win-win.
I'll keep, I'll let Sanchita know. I'll see her soon enough. That's, that's the executive director for Case. But yeah, we'll keep that communication open. And then so the next thing would be, and again, you also have information from Case with additional information that I shared, so feel free to read that. Green Meadow Building Project, we had, I included our sustainability goals that came from Sustainability Subcommittee and the larger group as well. And at the Um, and at the last meeting, the Green Meadow Building Project at the recommendation of the Sustainability Subcommittee of the group, we were looking at systems and like HVAC and heating systems for the buildings and they, we recommended the central heat pump um, as a system, uh, which is, and maybe air or thermal. We didn't necessarily make that decision at this point, just using a central air, central heat pump um, and chiller producing, so, and it produces chilled air and hot air. Um, that's opposed to the other option. There were several options, but the, sort of the common one that has been used in the past was the gas-fired boiler and displacement. So we opted not to go with that one. Um, some of the, some of the pros are the central heat pump, um, does both heating and cooling capabilities. Uh, it allows for upgrades in the future. It's electric, no fossil fuels, uh, no refrigerant in occupied spaces. Um, and it was clearly the preferred method, um, or the preferred system by the group, um, who voted at the building committee group. And I hope you do not have a lot of questions on this particular issue, because Mary's going to ask a question.
I'm just going to clarify that one of the other reasons that we chose to go with the one that we did was because down the road, so we went with the, the air one. Understanding that if we went with the geothermal, it would be a lot more expensive, but it's, this will have the capacity to, um, convert to, to the geothermal down the road, if there are grant funds available, for instance. So, um, just that was the only extra piece.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So this is the, so what I would say that this is the option that was the most sustainable, that kept us still within a reasonable budget.
Can I ask a question? I mean, I think it's going to be hopefully easy, but I thought I read some famous last words. Um, I was wondering, I know there's that extra reimbursement for chips or orders the, is that what the, the lead points? Is that what this is getting? I saw, I thought I saw that in one of your updates, but I just wanted to confirm that I was understanding what that means. Like if there's certain extra steps that are taken towards green and, uh, sustainability that you qualify for additional reimbursements over the standard, is that right?
Two percent. Yes.
Yeah, that's two percent. So that's what, that's what this is all working towards, right?
Right. And the other piece to Natasha is that there's Eversource. We're going to be, um, part of an Eversource program, which is similar to what Acton Boxborough use for their elementary school, which there's additional incentives there also.
Love that. Wonderful. Thank you. Exciting stuff.
Exactly. We are excited about it. Um, and then we have advertised our next, I think it's forum number three for the building project, and that will be on November twenty-ninth. Um, and that'll obviously be facilitated by our OPM and our text, that'll be, uh, MVG and Colliers, but we're looking forward to that. We'll continue to advertise that. Um, we've already started. And I think, since my screen is still a lovely shade of black, uh, that's all I have. And I'm excited to turn it over back to the chair, who will then turn it over to our principals for the school council recommendations.
Okay. Great.
Thank you. Thank you.
Unless anybody else has questions? Nope. Okay. Then let's start with the, I guess we can start with Ms. York. The high school? Please?
So thank you so much for having us in tonight. Our Maynard High School asks this year are all budget neutral. They involve finagling and making changes within the, um, level funded budget that we are envisioning for next year. All of these asks have been, um, they were first inspired by the school council and by the student advisory council and have been reviewed by our school council, the student advisory council, and also our lead teachers. They are driven by our school improvement plan, which is driven by the idea that students who are connected to school are successful students. So what we feel we need is to increase student access to social emotional support and restorative practices by adding an adjustment counselor, a sensory space, a peer, peer mediation, anti-bias peer training. And we envision this in just, adjustment counselor being the person who is in charge of this sensory space, which we are sometimes referring to as a chill spot for students to go when they are dysregulated and to become regulated again. We would also like the new adjustment counselor to be the person who coordinates all of the peer mediation, peer leadership and anti-bias peer leaders in the building. We need very badly to increase our support staff for our multilingual learners. In particular, we need paraprofessional support, especially Portuguese-speaking paraprofessional support due to the fact that our current influx of newcomers are coming from Portuguese-speaking countries and they have very little access to their curriculum and also to becoming connected to other students in school when they first arrive. And we definitely need Portuguese-speaking help. We would like to see increased staffing in the career pathways that interest our students. We need, um, Spanish and French support for our global studies pathway, art and graphic arts, um, support for all of our pathways. In particular, graphic arts and Photoshop are a part of almost every career pathway for the twenty-first century. Uh, our computer science teacher needs to teach one more course to have a complete career pathway for computer science. And our students and our school council would really like us to start exploring having a DECA pathway and having business classes that use that very exciting project and case-based DECA curriculum. And then of course, we want to support and act and enhance the activities that are actually popular with students. We want to keep track of which activities might be losing appeal and keep track of the newer activities that are becoming popular. Uh, we have students interested in esports, which is competitive video games. Maybe a connections club, which is a social justice club for young people. And we are hearing quite a bit about starting a volleyball club, which is also something that's very popular among the newcomers to our country and might be a great way to bring all kinds of students together, having fun. So those are our asks.
Great. Thank you. Um, does anybody have specific questions for Ms. York, um, or the Maynard High School?
I, I do, but I, I wouldn't go.
Sorry, Natasha.
No, it's okay.
Go ahead. You go.
Nope, you go. I'll after you.
Okay. Um, so am I hearing you right, Elizabeth, that you're saying you can do all this without additional funding?
Yes, you are.
Okay. How are we doing that? How are you doing that? How are you reorganizing?
Magic, Mary. Magic. Principal York, don't give away your secret.
Well, just as, um, as certain programs of study lose appeal, we can bring forth other programs of study that are becoming more appealing. As certain numbers of students go down, we can, um, fill positions like adjustment counselor, which I think we all know is just a tremendous need at this time. And our students are so self-driven. You've gotten to meet Rachel and Liam a little bit, and they are just two representatives of our three hundred self-driven students with some training and a good person to coordinate them. If we can get, um, restorative practices off the ground, peer mediation, peer leaders, anti-bias training, buy-in for our young people. The kids will make it self-sustaining and they will teach each other. It'll be a train the trainer model. So we really do think we can make it budget neutral. Although as we all know, keeping budgets level funded isn't as budget neutral as it used to be. So I, I leave that in your capable hands. But if we can keep it level, I believe we can do all of these good things for our students.
So, um, can you give examples of what you will be, um, possibly stopping offering, um, in order to add a couple of new things?
I think we'll leave that for a future meeting, not to, um, not answer your question, which I would love to do. But because, um, jobs are people. I don't want to talk about them.
Sorry, wasn't even thinking about, yeah, thank you. Totally. Yep. Yep. Blame it on my cold, but anyway, totally understand. Yeah. All right. I appreciate that. And, um, when, when you talk about, we, we all know that we, we're having more of an influx of Portuguese-speaking students up at the high school. Do you have an, I sort of like a, a guesstimate of how many students we're talking right now?
I'd say we're around ten vibrant young people speaking Portuguese with January on the horizon, which is when the school year ends in Brazil and many families immigrate. I wouldn't be surprised if we had a few more at the turn of the year. And we want to be very ready to do the very best we can.
Thank you. Natasha?
Um, thank you so much. I, it's really great to hear a lot of these, um, let's say, level service from a funding perspective. We'll be able to address so much um, in our vision, working towards our goals and the identified needs. And it's really wonderful to see that some of this maybe can be done through either attrition or shifting, um, there. I did have a question about, um, the different level. I guess it's more like one, is this one FTE? So for number one, number two, are we thinking that would be one FTE that would be fitting those, each of those roles? Potentially?
If we could have one FTE of adjustment counselor and a full Portuguese-speaking paraprofessional. I mean, it wouldn't have to be Portuguese-speaking, but a multilingual learner.
Right.
Paraprofessional, preferably Portuguese-speaking. We could do so very, very much to support um, needs that we are seeing on a daily basis.
Great. Um, and the, I know, and this might be more of a Brian or another day two conversation when we get closer to this, the district budget, but I know that a lot of the WAVM program was funded through a different source. And I didn't know, and just let me know if this will be discussed later at a different day, but I wasn't sure if there's going to be some shifting in that funding, um, potentially. I don't, and this is where the high school focus mostly, because we know that those are the, the staffs that are being funded through a different source, not necessarily operating.
I don't foresee any big change in chapter seventy-four Perkins or cable access funding, at least not in the next, next fiscal year.
Okay.
So that should be okay.
Yep. We will keep monitoring that then. And the sport programs or the sports, did you, did you say, maybe I missed this, but was there like a student survey? Cause I really love the idea of looking at esports for, you know, different alternatives for clubs. How did, how did you go about getting a lot of this or gathering this feedback amongst the student body?
Uh, conversations in the cafeteria, um, advisory surveys. And, um, I and Ms. Drav uh, at least a couple of days a week have the pleasure of supervising open gym, which is a really relaxed place where we get to talk to students who don't necessarily come to student council or student advisory and get to hear what they're interested in, particularly our multilingual learners who love volleyball.
If there's any opportunity to think of or considering some type of mentoring program where the high school to the middle school for either, you know, whether it's special needs or English learner, I, I would really, you know, think that'd be an amazing opportunity because it kind of builds that what someone at the high school maybe has been so successful at, and maybe it's towards the end of their high school career and maybe can be a supportive resource for someone, you know, either newly identified or new to the district. Um, you know, I just would, we're so small that I feel like we have so much opportunity to to be able to have something like that be successful, especially if we're noticing these larger pockets of like Portuguese speaking. How do we connect them with someone who maybe is already established? Here a little bit longer. So I, I, I think it's great. I, I know it's a need, uh, but I, I really think this is a great work to look forward to. And I just would put a plug in for looking to see how we can do some type of mentoring program between the bodies that need it most.
Uh, Mary?
Yeah, I just, I, I had, um, a thought that, um, not another question, but I had reached out to Kate Hogan about a couple of things. And one of the pieces that she came back, uh, we were talking about, um, career pathways. And she mentioned that there is additional funding for the implementation of innovation pathway programs. You, do you, you're aware, you're aware of that, right? You're working on it already?
Oh, that is why Mr. Synopoly needs to teach that one more section of computer science. He has, um, taken almost all of the steps he needs to qualify for innovation pathway funding. But the second college level class, which when I get to present to you about our program of studies, which is very exciting for next year, you'll hear his idea of how to add another compute, another college level class.
Perfect.
But sadly, he currently teaches a section of math that he won't be able to teach. But we think we have it figured out. Fingers crossed.
Excellent. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you. These are really great. Um, and I look forward to hearing more about all of this, um, once we get further along in the budgeting process. We can move on to Mr. Barth for Fowler.
Oh, good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me here. Um, I have, uh, I'm presenting, uh, three, uh, asks this evening. In addition to a level service, uh, budget for next year, where we can continue to fund our existing programs, despite, uh, costs that may have gone up on some of those, uh, costs on some of those things. Uh, our, our main ask is item number one, which is, uh, that Fowler is, needs more math support. Our data shows it. And we are beginning and kind of really rocking and rolling with Mr. Karajanis in a math committee that is reviewing our entire math program pre-Kata twelve. And, um, one of the outcomes of that work will ultimately be, uh, a new math curriculum, because Go Math is, is going out of publication. So our, our hand is forced there. And fortunately so, as it's not the most highly rated math program, we can do better. And, but we've also had many conversations about many, many other aspects of our math, uh, program in terms of just how we teach math and really studying our data. And what's come to light is that we need more support, particularly for our younger grades, our four, five, six grades. And so we're, we're wanting, we're needing a math instructional specialist. This would be in addition to our faculty. This person would of course, participate in the math committee work being done at, in the district. But would, the main aspects of the job would be to implement tier-two math interventions to close gaps. And those gaps were largely the responsibility of the pandemic. And to build teacher capacity through professional learning and, and coaching and things like that. Um, of course, this person would support the implementation of a new math curriculum once it's replaced. Um, of course, this person would support the implementation of a new math curriculum once it's replaced as well. Um, so that's our first big ask. Our second one is that we implement a detention program at Fowler. It's something we haven't had in all of my years here, and I'm not sure the last time we ever had it. And all that means is we just need to have a small amount of funding, just a few thousand dollars to pay. A paraprofessional or a teacher, a certain rate to stay after school twice a week. And monitor a group of students that have been assigned detention. But detention definitely helps with attendance, which is a, a big national problem right now. Uh, but it is a problem in Maynard as well. And just helping with engagement and accountability for all sorts of student behaviors and things that we're seeing. Um, that we didn't really see before the pandemic so much. So, uh, we can, uh, accomplish this through existing resources. Um, and sorry for the misalignment on the slide there, the number three. Uh, is, uh, that we want to increase our music teacher from point eight to one point O. One of the reasons why we want to increase that is because she will then be able to expand choruses to more grades. And as well as, uh, other music offerings. Um, currently she teaches general music to fourth and fifth graders. And she also teaches chorus to fourth and fifth graders during their, um, during their, uh, recess times. So students have to opt out of recess to attend chorus, but it's only two out of the four days. So it's every other day a student would miss recess for chorus. And she also then travels up to Maynard High School and teaches there. If we increase her to one point O, she could continue doing all of that, but expand chorus. And possibly another music class to different grades next year. It's not a big, uh, amount of money. But it is, uh, something I think that would honor her work that she's doing. And she's really had a great start at Fowler. Um, the other reason why I put it on there, I gotta be honest, is she's working a full day, even though she's paid for point eight. She doesn't have to be there as early as the other teachers, but she's walking in the door with all the rest of the faculty. She wants to do a really good job. And I feel like even though she doesn't have to walk in the door till nine o'clock. Um, she is there early, she's working a full day and let's honor that and expand our music. Uh, by making her a, a one point O instead of a point eight. And those are the, the three big asks that were shared with our school council and also with our lead teachers.
Thank you.
Um. You bet.
Any questions for Mike?
Have some. Oh, oh, yep. Um, thank you, Mike. Very, very interesting information here. And I appreciate the information about the math instruction, because I know that was talked about for the, the district goals. And, uh, look forward to hearing more about the curriculum that is, are being used. Do we foresee something being piloted at Fowler?
Yeah, I think Mr. Karajanis could speak more to the plans for that. It's, it's a multi-year plan. Um, but one thing we do know is, I believe it was mentioned that next year Go Math is going out of publication. And in addition to that, it's also not a highly recommend, a highly rated. Uh, curriculum by Ed Reports or Curate. So it's not on any state, it's not on any state recommended list. So, uh, the time is, is coming more and more nigh to replace that. And so, um, I don't believe it will be replaced this year, but it's something that would be, um, a couple of years out to, to replace that. But yes, to answer your question, yes, we'll be, be piloting. I'm sure that, uh, Mr. Karajanis will have pilots going on in the schools and teams of teachers, uh, discussing. Um, the results from those pilots.
And I guess my, my, my question was more about, kind of, you kind of answered it is that will it be piloted more this year? Considering Go Math is going out next year. So if it's, if we're going to be having, what are we going to be using next year if Go Math is not available?
I do believe Go Math will be available next year, and I believe it's after next year that it won't be available. And I, and I, again, I might not, I could even be a year off with that.
Okay, no worries. I won't, I won't.
I don't, yeah.
Granular about that. Okay, okay.
To get in the weeds of that. But I don't believe we have a plan this year to pilot a math curriculum this year. I don't believe so, but.
More in the discovery. So the, the math instructional specialist that we're looking to hire for FY twenty-four. Are you envisioning that person will be part of implementing the plan, I guess, as well, or in, in that whole review? Or?
Well, they would, they would certainly join that math team. That's absolutely true. They would be on that math committee. And they would then be a part of the pilot process and, and, and helping implement that at Fowler. And helping analyze data from it and the whole, the whole kit and caboodle.
Okay, so they would be, okay, got it. That's, that's helpful to understand, uh, there. Um, but they might also be, I, I see that, um, one C talks about tier two math interventions. Would they be? Cause I know this has happened at, at other times when we've had an intervention, a specialist, instructional specialist. Is that they end up taking on, the intent is that they kind of mentor and, you know, provide support and to, in modeling. For the generalized teachers to help, you know, build, uh, skills and in that capacity. But oftentimes they end up taking on a, a caseload that almost inhibits them from being able to do both at the same time. And I just wonder, and I see Mary shaking her head a little bit because I, that would be my, how do we, how do we make sure? Something like that wouldn't happen because I see interventions in here. So I imagine this person would be doing some push in interventions on their own. But then they would also be expected to do coaching. And then you're talking about data analysis. That seems like a lot for, is that like the unicorn position that a lot for one person?
Well, I think our good model is our current MTSS teachers. Who are doing all of those things very successfully. So we do have to manage their time. They do have to say no. They have to learn to say no. But, um, they, they work the same day as the rest of the faculty. And, um, are able to implement interventions as well as analyze data and help build capacity among our faculty. So we would just be, we would just need to, of course, be very planful about it. But I do feel like we already have existing staff doing very similar work. Their multi-tiered systems of support, and we could kind of take that as a model.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you for that. Um, the funding for after-school detention. I am curious how this aligns with the updated guidance that was shared about discipline. Is this one of the recommended, um, suggestions that came about that Brian was mentioning earlier? I know there was different.
No, this does not, this, this, uh, request for an after-school detention monitor. Came before any guidance was, was sent to us or shared. Um, I do believe it's a nearly ubiquitous, uh, thing for a school to have an after-school detention. Um, to help with accountability. It's just that at Fowler, we don't, we, we do it at Fowler. Um, but it's, it's, uh, you know, a student will have to sit in the main office. Which is kind of a fishbowl for the public to see as they're, as they're coming and going from central office or, or other things after school. And, you know, Ms. Lociato is making phone calls or receiving phone calls while that person is sitting there. Um, so it's not an ideal situation. So it's, we do have detention at Fowler, but we rarely assign kids to it. It seems to, seems to be our bar is kind of very high for it. And we need to, I think, have a more robust detention program. And I know that sounds bad, like we're going to have a hundred kids a day, and it's not, that's not what I mean. But just something where we can help support, um, good school attendance, being to school on time. And other minor, um, uh, offenses that I think would help students engage, uh, more fully in our, in our school.
If, if possible, I would really like to see a little bit more like a structure to what you envision for something like this. Also considering would, I know because we've had issues with participation after school for. Actually, like just to stay behind and learn, you know? And we were, had talked about a couple of times about afternoon buses, you know, just to address. Because a lot of, a lot of students can't, even if they wanted to stay after school to learn, they don't have the ability to go, you know, to get home. So I'm wondering how that would work here when you have a parent who maybe they can miss the bus. And they, you know, how do they get home? Um, the other part two is like, you know, is this maybe something that in the morning, could it be offered sometime like, hey, maybe thirty minutes earlier? Or, um, so there's like some flexibility for people who may be able to bring their child earlier to do. Um, time there versus having to stay after. I also know that a lot of the data shows that, um, discipline generally is disproportionate. To a lot of the, uh, subgroups for students with disabilities. Um, or minority students. And so if, you know, as we're talking about potentially putting more structure to a program. I'd like to be very cognizant of that. Is that paraprofessional? Cause I'm guessing some of these might be behavior pieces. Um, is that someone who's going to be maybe a, a special ed para, you know, who might be able to support that? You know, the issue is someone being self, you know, dysregulated and, and causing something. How does, the afternoon is very tough for a lot of kids generally, um, being for the whole day overstimulated. So I just want to be very cognizant of, of that and, and, um, not objecting to the idea of it. But I want to make sure it's a little bit more thoughtful in how it's presented. Um, considering all those pieces that, you know, that are, come up just immediately as a concern.
Yeah, sure. I mean, we, we currently discipline students at Fowler, so this would not change that. We discipline students every single day. And we always look at things like subgroup, uh, data and such. So the detention program wouldn't change that, the fact that we're disciplining students, which we do every day. Um, it would just add a place and a person to be able to, to sort of watch the students or supervise them. Rather than them sitting in the main office and, um, and, you know, a little bit less, uh, less, uh, discreet. And, and also there's only a few chairs there and, and, you know, that kind of thing. And it's, it's not really, it's not really Joanne's job to do that. So, um, it's just supporting her. But yeah, we, we would, we, we always, we do discipline students and, and, and we, we monitor those things, of course.
And is there like in, in, because once you bring more structure in the space and a dedicated person, the potential is that you would have maybe more. Right? Because I think the availability would be there. Um, what, what activities do they do in detention if you would have a space there for them? I would want to understand a little bit that. How does that envision if right now they're just sitting? You know, I, I, that is definitely not the best way to, to do it for Joanne. Um, to monitor that, but what would you envision the active, some of the activities that would happen in a dedicated space with someone watching? Um, that would be a more of a learning experience for them to, you know, either change of behavior. How, how do you envision that working more in a positive, for a positive outcome versus just discipline?
Well, generally in my experience, detention is a time for you to sit and work on homework. Um, and read. Um, and those are the things that you do during detention. You're not allowed to pull out a phone and play solitaire or video games or, or whatnot. And so the time is productive and students are asked to work on schoolwork. Um, I have seen students in detention that have chosen not to do that, and they just sit there for that amount of time and then, and then get up and leave at the end. Um, I don't envision putting any kind of educational expectations onto the, the person monitoring it. Um, in terms of like tutoring or, or anything like that. Um, but I'd certainly reach out to, um, to, uh, Olga, for instance, at, at Maynard High School. And see what her ideas are in terms of how it's run up there. And then we could m- model it after that, if they do some kind of educational components or that she has some really good ideas. And that way, when our students do go up to Maynard High School, they would be, it, it wouldn't be, they would sort of be accustomed to what it's like. Um, so we would, we could absolutely, um, meet up and, and model, model a similar structure. But we also know Natasha that, you know, this, this is, this is often a conversation. There's a, there has to be a common sense approach to discipline, especially with younger students. We know that a fourth grader who is absent from school or is tardy to school frequently. That's generally not their fault. There's general, if you give them detention. You're basically giving them detention for the parents' mistakes. And that's not acceptable. So we're, we're tuned into that. Um, and, and I think that really goes probably fourth, fifth and sixth grade. I think around seventh and eighth grade, I think it is on the students to make sure they're in school on time. But of course, there's always a common sense approach. And sometimes in a, a fourth grader, it could be that, that is their, their fault. But they, there may be some other things going on there. Um, that might be some mental health issues or things that need to be looked into rather than putting a student in detention. So, uh, you know, absolutely, we are tuned into that as a school. We're very, very tuned into S E L issues going on in our school and, and, and what are, and, and would take a comment. And we always take a common sense approach to who are we really administering this discipline to? Is it going to the right place or is it going to the wrong place? Um, so, you know, with our younger students, we, we reach out to the families more. And we file, you know, in extreme cases, failure to send and, and things through the, the Framingham Juvenile Court. Um, but with our older students, we, we do, you know, CRAs where it's really on the child that goes in front of the judge. And, you know, we really haven't done a lot at Fowler to promote positive school attendance. And it's, it's on the mind of a lot of faculty there. We're just this week working on getting off the ground attendance letters that will go home. Such as, has been happening, I'm sure for, for eons at Maynard High School. When you reach a certain, certain thresholds, a letter is generated and gets sent home to the parent. And, um, and so we're just working on getting that, even communicating, you know, that this is a problem to parents. And, um, and so I feel like we're kind of just in the infancy stage of kind of putting in place some structures at Fowler. That allow us to really, um, encourage accountability and, and stronger engagement in the school.
Thank you. And my last question, um, thank you for that, Mike. I know that's very thoughtful. Um, so I don't want it, I don't want it to be that. I know this wasn't a rash decision or rash thought. So I appreciate the behind the scenes, the context, um, to that. And we'll, you know, I'm sure we'll have more opportunities to talk about it.
Absolutely.
Increase music. I, I know you mentioned this. If, remind me, the kids get right now, fourth and fifth grade access, is it fourth, fourth and great? But then sixth and seventh, there's no music offering unless it's banned. Isn't there a gap right now that there's no continuity that goes all the way through the middle school? Would this?
That is correct.
Would this position help, um, fill that?
Yes, if we could add, if we could increase Miss Summer to one point O music. We could have her teach five classes a day, just like all the other faculty at Fowler. Um, now she would have to teach one of those classes at Maynard High School. So she has to leave. So there, there may still be a gap there. Because we still are dealing with shared staff across our buildings, but, um, but we would be able to expand significantly. So I, I can't say it'll be a hundred percent, but she'll at least be able to teach four classes from the current. She's teaching right now two classes in, in sort of the schedule rotation. And then two chorus classes that happen during the lunch blocks. And then she has to go up to Maynard High School to do her teaching duties up there.
Okay, all right.
So we, we would be able to expand. Yeah.
Okay, I know that's been a, a, a big gripe for families. They, they, they get, you know, they have their kid, gets all excited and, you know, third and fourth. And, and then what is it? Fifth and then, and then sixth, they're not able to have that again. There's just kind of a, if they want to just do music. Unless that, yeah, just for music, like they don't want to do that. Yeah. So, okay. Well, that's great. Thank you very much. Mary, sorry.
You bet, absolutely.
No, that's okay. Um, the, um, it is okay, Maro, for me to?
No, that's okay. Um, the um, it is okay, Maro, for me to know.
Oh, yes, go ahead, Mary. Thank you. So just real quick, Mike, I just wanted to reiterate what Natasha was saying about the math instructional specialist. We have done it before. Different name. Um, and they have been pulled and pushed in so many different ways that they have been not able to help in the way that we had hoped. So I'm hoping that I'm obviously totally in favor of this position. I'm hoping that the job description will be respected by the individual and also by the rest of the staff so that this person is able to do specifically the job that we're intending them to do. Um, and maybe the M T S S is a, a great role model for, you know, for that job description. But I really we were so hopeful that it was gonna help. The last time is a few years ago Denise Hatch could even speak to it. Um, and it was not the person. It was just like I say, they were being pulled in so many different directions that it just wasn't working. And then on
No, you're right.
Yeah.
Mary, when, when I started at Fowler, we shared, I believe we shared Denise and Terry Morrison. And then Terry became just at Green Meadow. So to put a really fine point on this, we would love to clone Terry Morrison and have Terry Morrison number two work at the Fowler.
Alright, put that in a job description.
Yes, so, so we, so we, we have these positions in our district, right? The Green Meadow has this position. We would like to have that same position at the Fowler.
Excellent, excellent. And then just, um, you know, the school detention monitor, again, you know, as we, as Natasha was mentioning the, the bus. Here we go with the bus again, the after school bus and the twenty thousand dollars or that in order that the children that, you know, that, so that the, the detention can be utilized as needed as well as the after school programs that we've talked about. So um,
Yeah.
Alright.
Yeah, I'm absolutely. Detention is it, at our grades where students don't drive and they are younger children, we ask the parent, we, we, you know, we say your child has, uh, needs to serve a detention. They can stay today if you'd like, but they could also stay tomorrow or can we, you know, and if the parent says they can't stay at all because they need to come home on the bus and they have to watch their baby brother or whatever, then we would work something else out with them. We wouldn't punish the student for that. We know that, we know that with our children, a lot of times it, it really depends on what the parent can, can do. And, and yes, not having a late bus is a great unequalizer in, in our district. Um, it, it would be great if we could have a late bus for sports and all sorts of reasons.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. These are great. Um, I, I have basically the same concerns about the maths um, instructional specialist um, that both Mary and Natasha um, mentioned. Um, so um, I don't think I need to go through any of that stuff. So um,
Okay.
So, but uh, I think it would be absolutely fantastic to have a one point O music. Um, I think it's really important to have music all throughout um, the grades. Um, especially the, you know, the middle school years because you know, that's like formative for kids that are, that are going into high school. Um, so it would be great to have um, to have that. And I don't know if there was some, there's something that we can do um, so that she's just at Fowler and then figure out something for the high school. So um, cause that, I just, I think it's it's important to have that, you know, for every year. So um,
Yeah, I mean, Maro, that would be tremendous if we could have one point O music just at, at Fowler. Um, there are, there's actually an enormous reason for having our own staff. And that, and I know we're a small town and, and this is currently not, not an ask from us, but if we could rotate our schedule so that when students are late to school, they're not always missing the same E L A class or same math class or those critically important classes. And students, some students, you know, have E L A last period for the entire school year. And maybe that's not when they can learn uh, reading the best at that best time. And if we could have a rotating schedule, um, then, then our staff, I think would be really into that. The, the problem is we have shared staff who have to leave at a certain time to go teach at the high school. And we also, it's not even fact, it's not just the teaching faculty, but it's also support um, staff such as um, you know, um, uh, O T and, and, and such and, and others who are speech and language who are shared. And if we rotate and we rotate differently than, than, than how another school does, then it becomes literally like four dimensional chess and it's an impossible thing to figure out how, you know, if band is moving around in the day of when it's, it's being taught, then how could Mr. Kozak leave at a certain time and go to the high school to teach his, his duties up there? So um, it is very tricky with shared staff to be able to do that. But that is an ideal goal of mine is to have a rotating schedule. It's also, it's not off the table with shared staff either. Um, it could happen with maybe just rotating the, the the before lunchtime or, or something like that. So there's, there's different creative ways to do it that we are looking at starting this winter with our scheduling committee.
Great. Uh, Natasha?
No, uh, Mike, that was, that's a really great point that you bring up about the, the different schedules and how that is just sometimes um, difficult for the, the shared resource because we've, we always hear the conversations of how do we combine or, you know, different schools to make sure that we're able to maximize those resources. And I know that was a thought maybe with Fowler and Green Meadow at one point. But to the fact that if you're on different schedules, it doesn't necessarily mesh well that way, even if you're attempt, even if you're wanting to share because they just don't fit into the same slots as easily um, for that. And I, it's totally understandable, a middle school schedule versus what a high school schedule would would look like. Um, might be different. So I'm glad you're trying to take a look at it, but that, that's a really good point to bring up. So thank you for raising that.
You bet. Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mike. Uh, let's move on to Green Meadow with Mr. Romo.
Thank you very much. Um, actually, it, they, they're both very difficult to follow these, the both of the principals. I think they did an awesome job and I think any of the, all requests would just really make our school system and district uh, a betterment. So uh, congratulations for both of them on their hard work and their school councils. Um, the first goal that we were looking at or the first ask is um, the idea of a technology integration specialist. What we've learned is that through the different resources that are now out there, programs that are purchased, other aspects. Um, technology has to become more embedded inside the classrooms, inside every day. Not to treat it as a separate entity, but in order to bring it right directly into the classrooms. So one of the areas we were looking at was a technology integration specialist, a person who would work directly with the teachers, help them in the promotion of lessons that would bring in the idea of technology into the classrooms. The second ask is a same ask that we did last year. It is for part-time uh, lunchroom or recess monitors. What this allows us to do is if they're there, it allows us to gain ninety hours of learning for the school year. So there are thirty minutes of a lunch or, or recess um, by a hundred and eighty days. If the teachers do not have to do that and the teachers are inside the classrooms doing instruction, it will allow us in our schedule an extra ninety hours. Those people would be the same people that would be there and we would create a program um, designed by them, what recess and lunchroom would look like. It would be a set program for kids such as games that can be played outside for um, kickball games or, or touch football, which is the kids really enjoy. We have a gaga pit. Actually, we have a second gaga pit that we have to put together, um, and just a general playground. Kids enjoy that. And I do think with having the right staff out there, we could really have our monitors and be able to um, have kids more playing together and allow our teachers to be in the classroom doing the instruction. The final ask is looking for um, two multi-tiered system um, support teachers from the M T S S, continuing that. We are very proud of the work that they have done. Uh, we have climbed a long way in the past two years, the amount of data that we use at the Green Meadow School to help determine our academic needs, to help in, to demonstrate our instruction is, is really been um, increased in the past two years. This group of teachers who are all well-versed in many areas, um, work in multiple ways. They do work directly with the teachers, they work as coaches, they work in the areas of the school-wide assessments. They also help put together all the data and they help run the um, the C P T programs, which we have our data, data teams. Then what they also do is we have a time period now where they co-teach areas of literacy and writing, a tier one. And then we currently do, they also have a small group of kids that do receive pull-out services. We'd like to expand this area to mathematics. So move, increase, stay with our literacy program, stay with the supports that we're receiving and also increase uh, those services, those same services to math. Those are our asks. We'll be happy to take any questions.
Mary, you go first this time.
Hey, Mary, go ahead.
I actually heard this presentation earlier because I was at their, their meeting this afternoon. So um, which is really, really great. But um, so we were talking at the time about um, the, the part-time lunchroom recess monitors, um, which obviously the extra ninety, ninety hours a year of classroom instruction is, is a no-brainer. Um, but I was, I was mentioning to um, to Rob's group that, you know, one of the concerns was that um, from what we heard was that when we had hot time people, they weren't dedicated or easy to, you know, just not show up or, you know, or that kind of thing. So there wasn't the continuity. And um, and the other piece that I thought of afterwards, Rob, was there are certain people that, there are people that think that you know, it's a different way for teachers to interact with students by being out in the playground and that with them and seeing them more. Sort of like the um, advisory um, commit, you know, groups that we've got up at the high school that hopefully we're gonna have at the Fowler too. But they get to see the te, the teachers in a different, in a different way. And, and um, teachers just have an understanding of the kids so that if there's issues, they, you know, they, they know the kids. Um, but um, as far as the um, as far as the classroom, you know, if we can, if we can work that out, I, like I say, this is a no-brainer. So um, thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Natasha?
Thank you so much, uh, Rob. This is great information. I, I had a question about, I had a couple of questions. So the first one, technology integration specialist, how does that differ right now from the compute? Cause you're talking about in the classroom, the computer, the computer teacher that
Correct.
Currently, what is that? What would be the difference?
Teachers are standalone on Natasha. So the computer teacher works as a specialist um, for us. The students receive that class uh, once a week in that area. And Lisa um, Salvatore does an amazing job. Her programming is everywhere from general typing skills to robotics. Um, so she, she really does have a, a large aspect that she does. The idea of an integration specialist is, as people mentioned earlier, we have resources and programs now that are out there. Current literacy programs like um, C K L A or, you know, other new math programs. They all come with a large aspect of technology now with them. Uh, we have a, a um, a, a, a science aspect in which the, it's all kind of a, a technology-based. And what we're finding is that the teachers in general um, throughout the day often don't have the time to do all that preparation and then bring in how technology can be a partner inside your classroom. So this person would work directly with the teachers, creating lessons with them in how they can use and, and integrate technology directly inside the classrooms as a teaching tool.
Would it be um, would it be more beneficial? And I don't know, because I'm just, just thinking out to have very more targeted professional development on some of those things so that you get, you're able to train?
Also be part of this. Yes, that person would learn the different technologies. This person during our staff development days during our um, our staff meetings, which we often use our staff meetings for staff professional development. This person would become intricate in the idea of working with our professional development committee in allowing for those things to take place.
But you think that right now, if we were to have during the year targeted like from an outside or even one of our own, maybe leveraging the, the skills of somebody, you know, in our district who could run a professional development? You think that's still not enough? You would, you feel like, and this would be a one F T E that you're asking for?
It would be a one F T E. This person is someone that um, as everybody knows, is inside the day of a teacher is, you know, as you get ready and in the elementary school, understand that the teachers teach multiple
Right, subjects.
Subject matters, okay? They are teaching E L A, math, science and social studies along with other things that are there. Um, this person, and it's always fantastic to have that second person to be able to has that understanding and background uh, into this. Um, and then they can come in and, and work a lesson with you and demonstrate how that technology can be used in your English class, in your science class, in your math class, whatever it may be.
Is this something that might be more fitting for a district ride resource? Like someone who can span all, because I'm guessing the technology aspect spans all, all buildings, right? They're just
It does, it does. I don't know how much time, um, Natasha, they would have because um, this person is going to have to meet directly with the teachers during common planning time. They're gonna have to mo, do multiple grades. They're gonna have to learn multiple um, technology programs that are out there that are, that come in. Uh, so I don't know how far we could expand it. We may be able to. Um, but I don't know how far, uh, this is an early stage, you know, ask, we'll say.
Right. No, I'm thinking about the, you know, the new curriculums as we're talking about, you know, you have right now, you have the, the literacy one and that's kind of going i, in thinking about math in the future and go math and how that will may align. Um, so we're just, again, just questions in, in understanding um, how the best fit would be for Green Meadow but or maybe or maybe not the district. Um, do you consider? Can you give me an example of where right now, uh, I think maybe I need a little more context on it. What is right now struggling specifically that, that drives this to be a full F T E need?
Um, what I would say is um, what we are learning is especially in some areas. We don't have, so we don't have a science program in the sense of um, you have workbooks and other things or so. So we use mystery science. We use some other, those come with kits. They also come with a technology aspect to that. To allow that person to work directly with the, you know, staff members. That would be a, a huge asset. And then you brought up that idea of C K L A. C K L A does have components that are now technology-driven. So we're, we wanna make sure that we're, when we purchase these resources that we're gonna use them to one hundred percent of their abilities. And if we're unable to do that, then we're sometimes spending money that we can't. Um, and some of the professional development that's given, it's good for a year or so. But this person would be able to be in with us on a, every single day, being able to understand these programs, being able to work as a coach and actually, as you've mentioned earlier, help those teachers become better at that aspect of that strategy. So I do see that it could be something that would be heavily started for multiple years and then maybe it would grow and, and adapt and change as time goes on, as your staff becomes more adapted, understanding how to use technology in the classroom.
And this is just more of a growing need because of COVID response and how the different ways we're, we're changing.
Learned a lot through COVID, we did. We learned a lot. And one aspect that we did learn is there are certain technologies that we used during COVID that we just, we've kind of now, when we got back, we somewhat have abandoned um, to the regular classrooms. And how do we integrate those back? How do we, how do we learn some of those things that we learned through? You know, Google and everything else. Um, there's a lot of positive things that people should take out of that also. Um, some of that technology, the learning, and we do admit that our kids are falling backwards. But in the era of technology, our kids are still like, our kids are, they are, this is the way of the world, you know what I mean? And we need to, we need to be in that game.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for that information. Okay. Thank you. Thank you for that information.
You're welcome.
The four part-time, I know there was previously a discussion or a suggestion that there might be an opportunity to look at the specials and the specialists. Is that something that is not really a viable solution?
We use the specials at this time, Natasha, to really work in our, who helped do that. So we've been able to redo some of that aspect. We've used our specials. Please understand that there's a contractual obligation
Right, right.
For any person in Green Meadow who does any recess, recess or lunch duty of any amount of time, they automatically receive an extra prep period.
Prep, yeah. And I think that's part of the scheduling hurdle is that we're trying to, what we're trying to achieve here is freeing up their time off of recess so that extra, that can be more focused on instruction.
That is correct.
Okay, that's, I just, and I know there's a contractual piece here. With that, because as a contractual component, if this were to be funded and implemented in FY twenty-four, how is the teacher's response? Or how is the temperature in the room that the potential that they may not have that extra prep time that they've become accustomed to?
I think teachers want to be with their students at, at all times. Now, again, whether that be at recess or in the classroom. But, you know, what we found out is that the, the teachers, and I know there, I, I understand the history and background of why it took place. But I do think the teachers understand that the schedule kind of gets difficult and it doesn't have a, sometimes a flow to it. When you have to become, you have to give this person an extra special and this person a special or, or time period, whatever it may be. You can't put kids down in the cafeteria just to have an extra study hall, you know what I mean? They have to be with somebody at all times. So once you're using your English teacher, your second grade teacher as a recess monitor, that means you have to use, and if you're using all five of them, that means you have to use five specials that same day in order to get, you know, them, their contractual obligation that goes with it. The teachers have been on board with this understanding and, you know, I don't, I don't believe they will have any difficulty being in the classroom and not necessarily being out at recess at this time.
Okay. I just know that this was talked about, I believe, in some prior contractual and it maybe it has a lukewarm reception to it. So if, it would be good to hear, I think, more from the staff about just like a, a good temperature read on, you know, now that we've had years and COVID and all that, you know, you have different people just to help inform and understand a little bit more the, the impact there. Thank you. And then the two MTSS teachers, would you, are you envisioning this would be add new or retaining the current but absorbing them into the operating budget?
It'd be retaining, you know, and absorbing them to the operating budget.
Got it. Okay. Because I do highly, highly agree that there's such a critical piece, especially with the, all the different literacy components and the data, there's so much data to analyze as you're evaluating success and monitoring. So I'm a thousand percent in support of, you know, retaining those MTSS roles in the capacity in, in some form to continue with that success and that opportunity for improvement. It just needed it. To me, it's a, that's also a no-brainer. Like Mary said earlier, for something, I feel like it's just, you know, we can't, we can't take two steps back and then, you know, two steps forward and then, and then three steps back because the, the needs are still there. And, and so, you know, if our kids need it, we just need it, we need to, we need a figure way to do it. So.
I appreciate your support.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. These are great. Thank you very much for explaining a little bit in more depth about the technology integration specialist. And I also have the same, the same questions as Natasha and Mary about the lunch and recess monitors. So, you know, getting, getting, definitely getting feedback from teachers about their thoughts on that would be great.
Be happy to.
And I'm super excited to keep going with the MTSS. I think that, that, you know, I feel like we've, you know, finally been able to get some of the supports that, that kids need. And also, you know, really looking at the data. You know, I, I feel like we've tried many things over the years and, you know, being able to finally hit on something that seems to be working for our district is, is great. So to be able to, you know, bring that back or not back, but, you know, continue it, I think is really fantastic. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay. So I think we're done with that. Let's see, the CPAC presentation. Unfortunately, we had some, some, some of the CPAC people had some illnesses and other things happening. So could not be here. So we will be rescheduling that at a later date. So now we're going on to the school committee goals. How do you, how do you women would like, like to go about doing this?
I wonder if we could do, get a, a shared, a screen share, because I don't think these were included in the packet, but, and maybe we just, I mean, approve, I think that we left off, they were pretty, I think, agreed upon unless Hillary, I, I don't. I don't know. Oh, is she still? Yeah, I don't think. And.
Oh, she gives a thumbs up.
Okay. So I think, you know, just thank you for, oh, there was some question marks there. Maybe I would want to say, are we taking out some of the, the question marks that are?
I think those were just.
Confirming the groups, the sub, the, the liaison groups. So maybe we want to talk about that.
Right. And who were, who was doing them? I don't think, I don't think we need to have who was doing them, but.
So maybe it, I would say in that, in that light, because I, I think the way we talked about it at our workshop, we didn't necessarily need to, we weren't intending to explicitly state all the ones that we were going to do, but we were just trying to capture the current ones, right, Mary? I, I, or is that what I'm remembering? So I just want to make sure we're not committing ourselves. These are the ones we're going to keep and maintain. I think that the intent was that we're gonna just do more outreach to these areas such, more, more like such as, you know, these, these are the ones that currently just previously discussed. So if we don't do all of them, we're not, not failing in this goal. We're just, we're making, we're chipping away in, in some effort.
Yeah, I agree with that. Mary, what do you think?
Oh, she's muted.
Sorry. We're definitely doing much more outreach even this year, you know, with this list. I mean, most of it, we do seem to be, to have representation. So yeah, it's a lofty goal and might vary for me at a year depending on what's going on. But I think it's something good to attain to, you know, kind of aspire to.
Yeah. So do we just make a motion to accept?
Colleen, can you just scroll down just a little bit so that we can see that, so that people can see the rest? Great.
And also I feel bad, Elizabeth, I know it couldn't make it tonight and I know she had a really heavy hand and kind of putting all of our crazy thoughts to paper. So I just want to make sure she gets a moment of kudos for making sense of some of our ramblings.
Yes, definitely. But go ahead, Natasha, I think.
Okay. Are we, okay. So I guess I will make a motion that we approve the school committee goals as written for FY twenty-three.
I can second, and if I can just have one question, because I did have to leave that meeting early.
Oh, yes.
If that's okay. Just the very last one, revising the policies pertaining to school activity fees and extra help programs. Can you just explain what was intended with that?
So we, remember when we agreed on the activity fees for this year? We were going to be revisiting them in January or ish, I think is the that placeholder that we had, we would agree on the ones. So I, you know, I think that's the intent, right? It's just putting our, holding our feet to the fire that this is what we talked about earlier. Let's, we're carrying this through. We're going to be, and it, maybe it's not a revision, it's just, you know, again, getting more data. You know, we, we implemented the electronic payment, you know, how does that impact everything to align more with that equity piece, I think, is, that was my, my understanding is that we would revisit it and see, you know, if we can chip away further at it without impeding the overall financial impact, that I think would be a win-win, right?
It, the, my only concern is that it, it says revise, but you, you're using the word revisit, which I like that, that terminology better. I mean, we may decide that we cannot do anything different or we may make adjustments. But I'd like to keep that more open-ended versus looking more definitively that we're going to do something.
Well, the fees are only approved until January. So we have to revise either, and some, I guess it could be continue in their form, which is still. So maybe if, do we want to amend that, that word or?
To just say revisit? I, as, as long as, as long as we all understand that it, it doesn't set us up for doing something that we may not, you know, want to. So that's all.
I, I. Right, because we did say that we were gonna revisit the, the, the goal, the activity fees in January.
Right. I'd rather have it say revisit the policies if that is okay with you guys.
Yeah, yeah, no, I am fine. So then I guess we'll have to amend the motion or I can withdraw it and we can make a new motion.
Well, can we just, just amend it to say with, with edits?
Right. I just, exactly. I, I put as recommend, as recommended, but we'll just have to amend them. Oh, Colleen's phrasing, have to amend the motion. She's already been seconded.
I just wanted to note that you wanted requested data and we won't have full data in Jan, by January because we still have the spring sports. So that'd be two thirds of the sports schedule, just so you know.
I don't know. For the athletic, the athletic fee component. Can you just answer, I'm wondering, because I know it just launched, we are using it for winter, winter sports, right? Is that correct? To collect for winter sport fee, athletic fees? Is it, I wonder if we could look at it for one season? Like as just a snapshot of what we did before. I don't remember if it was going to be launched for all the winter sports.
I don't know if you want to take the online fee service into consideration this year because it is really new and it's not, I don't think it's being used widely yet, since it's, it takes a year's cycle to get something that off the ground.
Right.
But as far as you had asked for, what students are free versus reduced versus scholarship? Who takes one sport, two sport, activity, music, WAVM, all that type of stuff? Which will take time.
Yeah, thank you. No, that's, that's a good point. So Mary, I wonder if it's revised policies as as available, because right, because if we don't have data on something, we obviously aren't going to be able to do a lot of revising of policies to consider, you know, the impact.
I still like revisit.
Revisit?
Because it always makes it sound like we're definitely going to make changes and we may and we may not. So. Yeah.
Yeah, no, revisit, revisit is good too. Either way, it's going to be amended, the, the motion. So, all right. So then we have, I'll make a motion that we amend the, I don't have my little cheat sheet here. Amend the motion to I'm sorry, amend the prior motion on the table to approve the school committee goals for FY twenty-three to include revisit in the action plans for goal three.
I'll second.
Great. Discussion? Okay, let, I'll take roll call vote. Mary Branley?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
And I'm a yes.
Uh, can, Colleen, are you able to do that change, that wording right there on that action, that last one revised, change that to revisit? That's the only edit we had there and then maybe we can get these posted whenever you have a moment to.
I think we all, don't we also need to take out those question marks?
Yeah, the question marks, I think that was the only.
In that under, is it two? I think it's under two.
Yeah, that's correct. Or maybe just take out the names. I think the initials, right?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, just to take those out.
Yeah.
I will do that after the meeting since I see half of you on my screen.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, well, no, no chairs report. So let's go to subcommittee reports. And start with Mary.
Okay. Let's see, I'm going from our last school committee meeting. It's been busy. So as Ryan mentioned, the, the building, Green Meadow Building Committee had a very rigorous meeting to talk about the heating and AC, HVAC for the hopeful new middle, new elementary school. It was, there were views from all over, so it was really great. And I'll let Natasha talk about the budget subcommittee. And then Elizabeth Albada and myself met with Liz York, the principal and assistant principal up at the high school about, as part of the strategic planning subcommittee to talk about the vision of the graduate and how we can help in that capacity. It was, it was a great meeting. There's a great, great things going on up at the high school. And then that same night, National Honor Society induction ceremony, which is really, it's one of my all-time favorite events of the year. Let's see. Do, 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 do. I think, oh, and then Elizabeth and I had our own strategic planning meeting later in the week. So I think that's, oh, other than the, the combined meeting between the school committee and the select board about the bleachers earlier this week. So I think that's everything.
Okay. Natasha?
The town budget subcommittee meeting, we met on, was it the second at this point? Yeah, I don't even know. It was not that long ago. But we met and we also had our subcommittee or our school subcommittee meeting. We've, we did have, I just, I know we sent an email, but there is a tweak in our budget calendar, just to make sure it's on everybody's radar. We're actually meeting December, I think, I know Colleen sent out an update on everyone, but it's December sixth is the school committee meeting that will be first talking about the, the first go of the budget that will be presented to us and then the following week will be when we are anticipated to vote on the request, just to kind of get everything aligned. There was a lot of discussion about a lot of things at the town budget meeting, but one of the things in particular that I, you know, have talked about, I think quite a bit, is the Medicaid reimbursement and how the intent of, of those opportunities were, were really to allow, like we know that the school department's budget is, is an enormous strain on, on the town. And so by allowing the schools to get revenue elsewhere to offset expenses, the intent was to do just that. And what the Medicaid reimbursement program is, is basically services or staff doing things for students in school. The school, you know, through our staff could submit claims, they get reviewed and then the monies are approved at the, for, and these are services could be for, you know, special ed kids or non, you know, whatever the. Special ed kids or non, you know, whatever, depending on what the eligibility is, but there's a lot of staff involvement in, in, in submitting those claims. And, and keeping data, we actually aren't able to even capture, take advantage of as much as we want. Because it does require so much more compliance and accountability for all those pieces, which is owned and carried by the school. We get money back and the revenues have been going up, which is great because it's expanded, but they go into a larger pool to the town. And are allocated across and just a larger pot with all funds. So, you know, we had talked about. And I, I think rightfully so, like, let us be able to offset the expenses that we are incurring from those, which is the intent of the program. So I think there's gonna be more conversations about that. I know we asked about the sixty forty split. I, I went to the mask conference and I actually brought it up at a couple of districts. There are some districts that actually. Or some towns, I think Millis might be one. I've seen it done two ways. They actually put it on a town article. On a warrant, and the town votes to have the money go to the school department, which I thought was a very creative piece. I've seen that in other school districts or other towns as well. So that might be something the school department wants to, or the school committee wants to think about if they're invested in, in doing that. And, and put it up to the town, decided that's a desire to do.
How, approximately, how much money are we talking about? I know that it probably varies year to year, but I'm just, are we talking?
Actually, Wayne, Wayne, I think Wayne had just sent over the most recent update. I hadn't even reviewed it in depth yet, but.
Wasn't this past year, like a hundred and sixty thousand dollars?
I mean, it's a person, you know, we're talking about, you know, it's a person, you know, it's a person. So, you know, and again, the services, we have a lot of those services are people who are doing them, and we're expensing more for those services. We're talking about counselors and all of those things that we know our students need. So to me, it's a no-brainer, but not everybody feels that way. So I, I think there's more conversation and more. You know, more room to consider, and I, I, I think we're just, we're not at the same, we're not at the same understanding of the intent of that. The example that was shared with me, oh, Wayne has his hand raised. I don't know if Wayne, if you want to speak to the numbers from this most recent quarter.
The most recent twelve-month data that I have reimbursed was two hundred and forty-nine thousand.
There you go. So that's two hundred, so, so basically, we're using, just to kind of, at a high level, our staff are doing these services. We are earning this money back. It goes into a larger pot. And that larger pot is used to fund our budget. So we're in a roundabout way funding our own budget, I guess is how I would look at it. I don't know if there's a different way to look at it. So we're funding ourselves through that, but we're also funding other town departments as well. And plus, we're also getting a lower allocation every year now from the town. So it's like, at least let us take advantage of the, the reimbursements that we're getting to help offset that burden that is being felt on the taxpayer. You know, we're already doing the work for it. So anyway, that's my, my soapbox that I'll continue on chipping it away at. Because I, I think it's a point that needs to be continuously addressed. The other part too was the bleachers. I think the select board, thanks for allowing us to join their meeting. I think it was a great conversation. I think, you know, I just mentioned earlier when Brian brought it up about maybe considering, we can advocate a little bit more about free cash, Mary. And, and that might be a good opportunity, once those numbers come in, to see if, if that might be a larger chunk we can get. This year, and then again, lessen the burden on the taxpayers down the road, maybe with, you know, capital. I mean, the CPC, so, and then I think the only other piece that we had was. See, finance committee. Oh, I, I did ask their recommendation, they hadn't, it was such a small turnaround, but I really would like to get a little bit more. Of a recommendation from FinCom, Mary, I was thinking about this, because it's numbers, it's money, right? They really should be kind of giving an opportunity to formally weigh in on what they feel funding may or may not be, or how that looks. Or, you know, if we're putting something out for an RFP or not, I, so I'm hoping that they will discuss it, you know, at a future meeting on an agenda. And it might be when we, we go to the school committee, or when we go to their meeting. Speaking of, we, we are penciled in for their January ninth, the school committee going to FinCom. So, and Brian, that would be you and Wayne, if you're available. But it's about the budget, our annual visit to FinCom, that'll be January ninth.
Great, thank you for letting us know that.
Yep, and then I also just wanted to highlight, I saw some information about an urgent need, a call to arms for volunteers for the telethon. I know it was, I don't know if there's a, a need, a lack of parent volunteers, it sounded like there, there was. In order for the telephone to, there's concern that it might not be able to happen, Mary. No, I didn't know, oh, your hand came up. Yeah, so I just, I don't know all the details on it, I just wanted to just kind of publicly share that there is a concern with. Adult volunteers for the telethon, so please, everyone, spread the word if you can. I'm sure that there's, the high school can probably provide some more information along those lines. And so, and just happy Thanksgiving, happy Veterans Day for folks before we head into the holidays.
Mary?
Yeah, no, I just had a couple of, of quick things. One is the, again, about the Green Meadow. Ryan, thank you for starting to share about the forum that's going to happen on November twenty-ninth at seven PM. Another Zoom update for the public about the Green Meadow building. So that piece, and also just kudos, I think this might be, Liz might still be on. Liz DeWallace, this was really cool, when I was at the school council meeting today at the Green Meadow. She orchestrated a veterans breakfast last week at Green Meadow. So kudos, because I, it's just, that was just so, I, I just loved that. So, and it sounds like it was an awful lot of work to put together, so that's, that was the other piece.
Okay, thank you. All right. This week was, is our eighth grade nature's classroom. So, I, I'm, I'm, can't wait to hear what has happened there, once they get back. And, and especially with the snow, hopefully everybody packed the right things.
That was unexpected.
Know that my son did not. And then I just wanted to say congratulations to both boys and girls soccer. And football, and then cross-country for, you know, their successes in their state. State run, they all did really fantastic. I think cross-country is still in it. So we'll, we'll root them on for that. And then, last thing is homecoming tomorrow night. So, which I think we already heard from Rachel, so. And that's all I have. So now we're on to the consent agenda. We have. One minute. Which is eight eighteen, two thousand twenty-two, so without objection. I'd like to approve, have approval for that. And then for the warrants, we have. Twenty-three dash twenty-three, twenty-three dash twenty-four, twenty-three dash twenty-five, and twenty-three dash twenty-six. And if we have no objections, I'd like to approve all of those. So.
And I just want to thank Wayne and Colleen and your finance team, because I will own for two weeks. I was late signing, and so I just want to hold my own feet to the fire that I, I was away at the conference, I got thrown off. And then I was sick, so, but no excuse, I own it, my bad, and I've updated my calendar to make sure they get updated. Before nine o'clock on Monday, so thank you very much for all your work to continuously nudge us and do better.
Yeah, thank you. I think we all, some might need that.
Yeah, we do, we need, we need, we need attention. Where, where's Principal Bar?
Okay, so. Now I think we're moving into executive session, so. Let me just go and grab what I'm supposed to say for that. School committee will now move into executive session under MGL Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A two. To conduct a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-using, non-union personnel. The superintendent, since an open meeting would have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body and the chair, so declares. The school committee will not be returning to the open session. And now I'm going to roll call vote to enter into executive session. Natasha Rivera?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
And Mara Hogan, yes. Thank you so much, everybody.